Okay, there's still people here. New people came. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Leigh Clancy. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Lynn County. The League is a nonprofit volunteer political organization which neither supports nor opposes any candidate or political party. The League encourages citizen participation in government and is open to anyone ages 16 or over. This forum is part of our voter education efforts to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming elections. And we hope that over the course of this program you will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for our county. Welcome to this candidate forum between John Harris and Brent Olson, who are running for the office of Lynn County Board of Supervisors, District 3. I will start by explaining some procedures for the forum which each candidate received ahead of time. So, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. John Harris will go first, followed by Brent Olson, and two minutes for a closing statement, and Brent Olson will go first for that. And then, two minutes to answer each question. Don't feel as though you must take all two minutes. If you don't need to. Okay. The timekeepers are sitting in the front row right here, and they will hold up a card when there's half a minute left on the time indicating you have three seconds left. At 15 seconds, they will hold up a card that says 15. And please wrap up when you see the stop sign. If you continue speaking when the stop sign is held up, I will thank you very much and move on. Candidates need to confine their statements and responses to relevant issues and refrain from any personal attacks. And this forum is being recorded by Robin Cash in the back here of Neighborhood Network News and will be available to watch at the LWVlynnCounty.org and www.neighborhoodnetworknews.com websites. ProVideo is also in the back, live streaming this event at the ProVideo Productions Facebook page. So, if you have not already done so, please turn your cell phones off if you have one. If at any time you cannot hear during the forum, you can't hear either me or either of the candidates, please let us know. We request that you treat both candidates fairly. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that after closing statements, you may clap for both candidates if you wish. You are encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the provided pieces of paper. They look like this, and they are in the back. If you raise your hand, a League member will come around and give you one. Questions must be addressed to both candidates and must apply to issues or qualifications for this particular office. Raise your hand if you'd like another piece of paper or have a question that needs to be collected. And the panel over here will review the questions for legibility, because I have to read them, clarity, and applicability to all candidates. I will read as many questions as time allows, and sometimes I might need to combine questions that are similar, striving to cover a variety of topics. So, also, this microphone right here is not working, so Mr. Harris and I are going to be sharing this microphone, and he has agreed to that. Thank you very much. Okay, and so, Mr. Harris is going to begin with his opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight, and thank them for the hospitality and their civic duty to keep voters informed. I'm a fourth-generation Lynn County resident. My great-grandparents ran a grocery store in what used to be known on 16th Avenue as Ernie's Avenue Tavern. I've been -- I was born in Cedar Rapids and have lived in the rural area for 26 years and been in public service in Lynn County for 25 years. I've considered it my honor and privilege to serve. I've spent 17 years in city government as Palo's mayor and a city council person, and eight years as your Lynn County Supervisor. It's clear to me that being part of the decisions that affect people's lives has become part of who I am. I have the opportunity to get to know our citizens and what's important to them. I visit one-on-one with anyone who calls or visits my office, usually with an issue they have, and see that it's my responsibility to listen, find a solution, and perhaps make a difference. I visit with the mayors and officials of the villages and cities that dot the landscape around the metro area to understand what's important to them and work to create partnerships with them so their needs are recognized by the county so we can tackle important issues as a team. We look forward to the next hour or so this evening. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Olson.
How does this turn on?
Oh, sorry. I have to press my heart under my bottom here.
Is it working? It's not working. Yeah. Can you hear me now? All right. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum tonight. I appreciate being here. I have a daughter and a son, Kennedy and Quinn, both teenagers, and live here in the community. Live in Marion, grew up in Burlington, Iowa, graduated Burlington High School in 1989, and went to the University of Iowa, both from undergrad and law school. And I'm first-generation Lynn County. I chose this community after law school because this is where I wanted to raise my family. And it's been one of the best choices I made after leaving the University of Iowa. One of the things I believe in in public service is providing leadership. And leadership is more than just managing a system, but I believe it is about going outside of the box and doing things that are important for the citizens. One of the -- a couple of things that I think are important in our little rectangle called Lynn County in Iowa where we can make a difference as local elected officials is trying to make our community a better place to live, where it can play. And so, I've tried to concentrate on issues like conservation, parks, trails, and outdoor issues that can benefit everyone, all the citizens here that choose to move here like I did. Transportation issues are also things that I focus on, like the completion of Tower Terrace Road, and of course, keeping our fiscal house in order so you can afford to live in this community. And so, that requires prioritization of the issues we could afford. I look forward to discussing these with John tonight.
Okay, apparently, we only have one working microphone, so we're going to be sharing a lot tonight. Okay, Mr. Harris, I'm going to have you answer this first, and the question is, there are two people that have asked basically the same question. How will having three members change the workings of the Board of Supervisors? How is the work going to be divided up when it changes from five to three?
Frankly, I have no idea. It depends on who the three are. We're going to have to figure out of the three that are successful in this next election what their strengths and their weaknesses are, and how those complement each other, and how we can distribute the workload. As was mentioned in the previous forum, we're responsible for both the legislative and the executive part of county government. And we can't give up the legislative part. We can't delegate that to staff. We have to do it ourselves. So, that's half of what we do that we're going to have to maintain and hold on to. So, the executive part of it are the things that we're going to have to try and either work really hard to get it all done or delegate it to staff. And that all depends on who the three are and what their strengths are.
I think the three Supervisor models step back, especially for District 3, because I felt like John, both John and I, provided a good representation to the rural and non-metro areas of the county, and now that's going to go down to one person. And so, it's going to be difficult, but I think it goes back to this leadership issue. And we're going to have to provide strong leadership to make sure that we stick to core county responsibilities. And we can't be everything to everyone. And so, I'm going to continue my focus on how to have a community where you can live, work, and play. That's my focus and my agenda, and that really, I think, dovetails with what county government does. And so, that's what I'm going to focus on as far as the issues that we tackle. Now, it's not going to be easy being able to walk into Supervisor Rogers', Supervisor Walker's', Supervisor Harris's' office, like we have been able to bounce ideas off of each other and how to make our government better, because you'll have that quorum issue. But we've done it before, as pointed out, and just, so I think it requires strong independent leadership, and that's what I intend to provide.
Okay, and we're going to switch back and forth between who goes first. So, you will answer, Mr. Olson, you will answer this question. And actually, three people have asked this question, and it has to do with responsibilities of a Lynn County Board of Supervisors. What are they? What's your working relationship with current elected officials and department heads? And what is your experience in managing multiple departments?
Well, I've been on the Board of Supervisors since the election of 2008, serving since 2009. We have currently a budget of about $120 million. We have somewhere between 19 and 20 department heads that report to the Board of Supervisors for everything from the Lynn County Jail to Lynn County Engineer, secondary roads, a whole host of departments. Also, the Board of Supervisors acts as the policy determiner, and so, it's important that Supervisors come with where they want to take those expenditure monies and how we want to take that and turn those into either projects or policies that affect the betterment of people. So, those responsibilities are important. Now, going to three Supervisors, they become even more important. We have less voices promoting those, but I think I work well with the other elected officials, from the county attorney and sheriff to the county treasurer, and I can improve my relationship with the county auditor, but I think we all can do that. And I think that I've done a good job over the last 10 years in promoting those issues and working with department heads.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. I agree with Brent. It's the primary duty of each individual Supervisor to manage that budget of $120 million in a year. And we have to balance, we have to take a look and divide wants from needs. We have to balance essential services with tax revenues, and we have to make sure that Lynn County continues to be a safe place to live and a good place to live. Currently, I have a, I think I have a pretty good relationship with elected officials and department heads. I visit most of the departments in our building daily, take kind of a good morning round and see how things are going. A lot of times, they'll volunteer information on what their department might need or what's the important task of the day. And I think that that relationship helps when we start talking about tough issues like budgets and where the money is going to be spent, who's going to get the greater share, the better share of budget money when budget time comes around. As far as the elected officials go, I don't really feel the need to micromanage those elected officials. They have their own departments. As I've heard, they're autonomous elected officials that may or may not report to the Board, but the voters will decide whether they're doing a good job or not, and we just need to cooperate with those elected officials and trust them to do their job.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Harris, this is for you first, and it has to do with ADA compliance, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. As new structures are built and old ones are renovated, what specific measures will you take to ensure ADA compliance? And how will you enforce noncompliance, the noncompliance which exists today? While it is the case that new structures must be ADA compliant, it is not always the case that it is enforced. So, there you go.
Well, I think that it just is a fruitless endeavor to try and build a new building and not have it comply with ADA requirements, and I think the rest of the Board agrees with that. We have, yeah, now our capital budget, millions of dollars set aside to let the existing buildings that we have comply with ADA requirements, and we review those at least annually and usually semi-annually to make sure that we're on the right track. I need to talk a little bit longer. They're going to run out of questions.
Good question. Lynn County's actually been a really good leader on ADA compliance. In fact, with the Americans with Disabilities Act, we actually stepped forward and entered into an agreement with the Department of Justice, spent a little over $100,000, maybe $150,000 on consultants to come in, and we entered into this agreement with the DOJ so that we'd have time, as we encountered ADA issues, to remedy them ourselves and on our budget. And it saved us millions. Other communities have been forced to do that because they weren't proactive, and so now they're spending millions of dollars on curb cuts and other things like that throughout their community, whereas we have put our plan together and fit it within our budget to do that. So, we've been extremely proactive, dare engage our policy, and the administration director is in charge of that effort now, and every department head knows what they have to do under this ADA compliance agreement. And so, we have a plan going forward, and I think that's just one of the many things that we've done where we've been proactive and spent the money upfront and saved a lot on the backend.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Olson, this is for you. What do you feel is the biggest challenge to representing the urban versus rural residents? And what services are provided to city residents?
Well, so, I live in Marion, and it's the second-largest community in Lynn County, and it's urban, so I represent urban people. But obviously, this particular district comprises the rest of, most of the rest of the rural area of Lynn County, and there's different needs. Obviously, when we go to even the tax, we have our general levy, and then we have a rural levy, an extra levy, and a lot of the people that don't live in a community, you know, pay the second amount, and have that, only half county government is their representation. One of the biggest challenges in representing a district like I do is that county government is defined all by statute. It's a creature of the creation of the legislature. While we do have home rule, there isn't a lot that we're supposed to do outside of our core responsibilities. And so, the citizens that I represent want to make sure that we don't effectively become a second city council for any one of the communities within Lynn County. In other words, being the second checkbook, doing a lot of things that the city does. Cities and counties are very different. And so, in representing my district, sometimes it's playing defense, because we have pretty much an unlimited bonding capacity. It wouldn't be very long if we said yes to every city council that came up with a great idea that really should be their own responsibility before we'd be taxed to death. So, that's the biggest difference, is sometimes playing defense and saying no.
I think one of the biggest issues with the urban-rural relationship is to try and figure out what's fair balance. You got the folks that live up in Coggin that don't feel like they need to pay for flood protection in downtown Cedar Rapids. You get the people in Cedar Rapids that feel that they're entitled to a bigger share of the tax, of our tax money, because they're a bigger share of our tax revenue. So, to try and find that balance, you know, that same person up in Coggin or Walker is getting his road resurfaced because some folks in Cedar Rapids are paying their taxes. So, to try and figure out what's right, and not necessarily what's popular, but what's fair, to try and divide and share that tax revenue between the rural and the urban folks. Services to city residents? Gosh, the biggest thing I can think of is lifts. We run a bus service that's in conjunction with the city bus service for folks that either can't afford it or are disabled and can't use the normal form of public transportation. So, we're in conjunction and supplemental to the City of Cedar Rapids bus system.
Mr. Harris, this will be yours for first. This has to do with mental health. What is being done to continue mental health care once offenders are released? And what ideas do you have to lessen the stigma associated with mental illness in Lynn County?
I'll try and answer that, but usually when I get asked a mental health question, I go and talk to my friend Ben Rogers to give me the answer. I don't know what you do to lessen the stigma of mental health issues or mental health people in Lynn County, other than sit down and talk to someone who has mental challenges, sit down to someone, with someone, or try and just understand how a person that suffers from depression views every day. And try and understand that it's, they're just people, and they need our attention and they need our compassion. And I think if we had a little more compassion towards people that have mental illness that, or mental challenges, that we can make some steps as human beings and as citizens of this county. And I think that's it. Go ahead.
I do rely on Ben Rogers. But I'll take a stab at it. You know, Lynn County Jail can't be our answer for mental health programs here. While there's 99 counties and there's not, you know, our jurisdiction is that little rectangle, we need a better, we need to be better advocates to the state, and I think the state needs to be better listeners to what we've been saying. Put your money where your mouth is. You know, we need consistent funding, reliable funding from the state for the programs that we administer on their behalf and the federal government's behalf in this regard. But also, we need the state to allow counties to be able to fully utilize their home rule and, like Supervisor Rogers was talking about earlier during his forum, be able to experiment with either facilities or programs to tailor it to, you know, a community like Lynn County where, you know, we're obviously a lot different than Taylor County. And can we have programs here that are uniquely beneficial to the citizens that live here? For example, trying to tackle like drug addiction and things. We're prescribed, you know, for really considering that a malhealth issue, but we all know it is, and we can't do anything about it because we're so prescribed by the state. So, I think, you know, working with state officials to allow counties to properly experiment is a really good step in allowing then that government, the Lynn County Board of Supervisors that administers these programs, to be able to tackle issues on a more personal basis like that.
Thank you. Okay, this next question is about regional emergency dispatch. Studies support a proposal to create 13 dispatch centers and eliminate redundant city centers. So far, Lynn County has refused to join with Cedar Rapids and Marion to form a regional dispatch center. Why? Do you support consolidated dispatch?
I've supported the concept of consolidated dispatch since my election here. The City of Cedar Rapids, Marion, and Lynn County, right after the flood, did a communication system for the towers, and so that law enforcement could talk to each other through that system. It's not quite a bit of money, but they were there at the very beginning, the sheriff, the police chiefs of both communities, and the Board of Supervisors and the city councils working to make sure that that major expenditure and system was implemented in a cooperative way. Now, you've come to dispatch and the issue, and I again, support the concept of consolidation, but my experience with it so far has been that the City of Cedar Rapids wants to control it, wants to decide the system, wants to run the system, and they basically would just like to fold in Marion and Lynn County. And our sheriff isn't having any of that, and I kind of agree with him. When you want to do consolidated services in a regional basis, no one community can then control it. It has to be independent. And until we get beyond that on whether it's dispatch, public transit, flood authority, or anything like that, then we're just going to be doing our own thing. And it's unfortunate, and it's just the way it's designed. Cedar Rapids is 58 percent of Lynn County, and they let you know that they are. And that doesn't, isn't a very good working relationship then. You have to start from beyond that.
I agree with Brent on that one. I am in favor also of emergency regional dispatch, but the way that it's, the way that was described to me by the sheriff is a lot, is like what Brent explained, that it's not truly, it's not truly regional if you're going to have regional emergency dispatch. It needs to be truly regional with an independent board to answer to and not one single entity running that board that might have an interest one way or another on how that particular dispatch center is operating.
Okay, and Mr. Harris, this one is for you. Has to do with constituent relations. Please discuss your approach to constituent relations.
My phone rings a lot, and Brent probably can attest to that also. A lot of the problems that warrant an individual to call into the Board of Supervisors has to do with roads generally. Or it's a rural issue also. Maybe it has to do with water drainage, but mostly roads. And they all have their own ideas on how it got the way it was and how it should be fixed, and usually, they ask for a personal visit. And that's usually when I leave the office and trek out somewhere and stand in a road with them and have them show me what's wrong and what they would like to see fixed. Sometimes they show up at the office, and they usually can find a Supervisor to sit down and talk with. That's the way that the Board handles constituent relations. We answer the phone. When it rings, we end up out in the field when it's warranted, and we will occasionally have our constituents come in. Sometimes it's a scheduled meeting. Sometimes it's just on the fly. They show up at the window and they want to talk to a Supervisor. So, I think that, especially since we've put more focus on customer relationship management at Lynn County and, I'll say, three. If you want to see how fast two minutes goes, sit up here, and I'm trying to answer these questions.
Well, my opportunity, and I say this with all the questions, but my opportunity for constituent relations has went down a little bit since my good friend Steve Gans retired from secondary roads. But in all seriousness, we do get a lot of calls on roads and zoning issues, and I learned from former State Senator Mary Lumpy about constituent relations. Everybody gets a phone call or some sort of contact within 24 hours. Everybody gets a phone call or some sort of contact within 24 hours. You need to develop personal time for that person and you need to not judge the issue that they're bringing forward until you've heard their personal story. And so I tried to do that on Fridays. I usually build up during the week, on Fridays I'll be making personal business. I'll usually, it's a road issue, so I'll to the described place and we'll bring, many times we had Steve out there, and the issue changes a little bit when you have the person that's in charge of fixing it myself and the person raising the issue when you're all three there. And so that has been a pretty good model. But I give my cellphone to everyone, it's all over my stuff. I think we're both, all the supervisors have been very good about case management. And that's our chance to interface with the public and to one-on-one solve an issue. And it's an important part of the job.
Thank you. I have a road you could come up and look at.
Just kidding.
I thought you were seen around.
Not anymore. Okay. This one is for Mr. Olson first. It has to do with senior centers. In 2008, we lost the Whitworth Center in the flood. What have you done to replace resources for seniors?
Largely, there was a proposal to do another senior center. We worked on that for a little bit. When Lou Barron was here as county supervisor, that was something that she really took an interest in. But that was largely the county hosting, being the host for the facility, but the nonprofit agencies working out of it. And so I would say that Lynn County does not have as robust senior program that's to join with the county as you would see in maybe Johnson County. But it's my opinion that that has to really be led by the nonprofit groups. We do have strong nonprofit senior centers and senior programs in this community, but largely, I don't think the county has played a role. We were asked to partner up after the flood, but it is not, nothing has really come to fruition. There hasn't been really an effort that I've seen to have the county really do anything in replacing what we had before. And so I would say that I'm not sure if there is a role for us going forward. If there is, I'm open to it.
I agree. We lost our senior center in the flood and the nonprofits stepped up to take up the slack and fill in that, fill in that need for the community. They seem to be doing a heck of a good job at it. We were open, if anybody comes and defines to us a need or help to the senior centers or perhaps taking over some kind of senior center role in the city, we certainly would take a look at that and consider whatever that need needs to be filled to fill. I think I have not heard complaints and I've given that. I would make the assumption, which might be dangerous, but make the assumption that there right now in our community may not be that great a need for a senior center. And we just allow the nonprofits to keep doing what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. This is for you first. What investments does the county have and how might those investments be improved?
The treasurer took on the incentive a year or two ago to take a new look at how we, how we saved our funding in inland county and where we might invest some of those funds that we hadn't really done a very good job of investing before. We have a CPA that we hired a couple years ago. And Sarah has done a wonderful job of distributing our assets in such a way that we're getting as good a return as we can probably get from any other type of investment portfolio. So as far as the money goes, that's where I think we're doing the best job on investing.
So I sense, yeah, about the treasurer's office and where our short-term and long-term monies are invested. And that's really the purview of the treasurer and have come to us. But that's also rarely prescribed by state. There's a lot of regulations in regard to that. And I remember back in the, you know, the late 80s or early 90s, there was a, quite a big scandal involving investment of taxpayer monies that were either short-term or long-term in bonds and other things. And so the treasurers and local governments were really circumscribed on how they could do that. And so even with IFRS, you can't invest in anything that's got potential for big return because obviously with a bigger return comes more risk. And this isn't money that we're going to be risking in the stock market. As much as I'd like to see those returns go up, sometimes the returns are even less than the rate of inflation, but really, it's our job to make sure that they're really safe investments and those are certificates of deposit or, you know, it's sweep accounts that basically are the very minimum interest. But it's not our job really to make money with that short-term money that's being just held to pay other communities and pay the bills. I just don't think that there's any real answer to get a bigger investment if that's what they're looking for.
This has to do with campaign donations. Have you accepted any campaign donations from the NRA, the Farm Bureau, or any other PACs? And if so, why?
So from the NRA, I am a member of the NRA, but I have not received any donations from the NRA. I am a member of the Farm Bureau, not received any donations from the Farm Bureau. I'm not sure if the question wants me to list through all of them. Donations that I've received, that I've received, donations mainly from citizens of Lynn County and family and friends that appreciate the work I've done and support the vision that I'm taking to represent citizens of Lynn County. I've received donations from members of labor and both, I don't consider this office really a terribly partisan office, but both while I was a Republican and a Democrat, have enjoyed the support of members of labor because I believe in most of the issues that people have come together to form labor unions and board. Obviously, you can see that reflected in the work I've done on project labor agreements or the purchase agreement when we built under the flood. But I just, in county offices and even city offices, it just doesn't lend itself like it does to the legislature or Congress to having special interest groups writing checks. So I have not seen any on my behalf or on my opponent's behalf that would be troubling or concerning to the community as far as, in fact, I would say it's more troubling that it's as hard as it is to get the money just to get a little bit of information to people to make the vote. That is very, very difficult to raise money for a local office.
Thank you. I haven't received any money from any PACs either. But if the questioner would like to take a look, we, you can go to the Iowa Campaign Ethics website and get a complete listing by name and address of who's contributed to any campaign account and make your own judgment from that.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Harris, what do you believe to be the top three issues facing Lynn County? And how would you lead in addressing them? And what advisors would you work with on board decision-making?
Well, mental health issues, mental, we need, we need to take better care of our mental health issues. We need to get our access center going. The expert that I probably would depend most on for information would be my co-supervisor, Ben Rogers. I think the other issue that I see that we really, we have started building our public health and child and youth development building. And we need to make sure that that stays on schedule and we get it finished and we get it finished in the budget that we've set forth to finish that building. I'd really like to see that come true on schedule. Third issue is, I think we, I think we need to, from a public, public safety issue, I think we need to take another look at our roads department, try and figure out how we can, how we can improve the quality of our roads and maybe increase our dust control and improve the safety of our rural roads. You were going to throw that in, weren't you?
Okay. Obviously, I believe in my tagline, "Live, Work, Play," and Lynn County is kind of what guides me. Conservation and water quality, parks and recreation are my top issue. And there are other elected officials who in city government, county government, who focus on economic development. And I think that that is great and needed and absolutely for a vibrant and big community like this with the amount of businesses and opportunities we have in economic development that that would be done. But to lure people here to work at Rockwell or Transamerica or any of the other big companies or just to make the decision like I did after school to want to come to this community, you have to have things for people to do. And to bring those young people here and to be competitive. And so I think the investment in parks, in water quality, in trails, in recreational opportunities is key. And I'm going to continue to make that my top issue and the one I focus on and it's one I'm passionate about. I also think that you have to have the proper infrastructure. So when you have Highway 100 and you need new interchange at Tower Terrace Road and to connect, truly connect all communities to make that economics work, you have to have a world-class transportation system. And we need that to continue our focus on the Tower Terrace Interchange and Tower Terrace Corridor and things like that, like Highway 30. And then finally, I think spending and overall, the way we manage this large budget, the money that we're entrusted by the citizens, that we have to be properly prioritizing. So flood control is going to be a big issue. What's the county role in that? I think that that folds into the spending issue that I'm talking about and how are we going to confront that and other challenges that we have as county supervisors.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, this is for you. It has to do with racism. Racial bias is a systemic issue. Should the county address this? And if so, how?
Yes. I mean, obviously, it's a huge issue. It's one that has come to the forefront in the last few years. There's much that the county can do. The Set Task Force is one issue that Supervisor Walker's brought forward that I've learned a lot about, that deals with institutional racism and the effects of that in our communities and how that interacts with poverty and class and violence. Those are all things that are highly segmented in what we're already supposed to do in our charter. You know, like you look at public health and the issues that our public health department tries to tackle, that is key. And so having that kind of initiative trying to bring, you know, the fact that we run a jail that is disproportionately filled with people from a different race, the law enforcement and the way it's administered in our community, the concentration in certain neighborhoods of these issues affects all of us. And so I think there is a role for the county to do. And I guess my focus has been on learning because I've not been exposed to it. And I've lived most of my life in Iowa. This is the most diverse community I've lived in. So, and that's, I'm not saying that, that's probably sad for somebody like me, but you know, I'm open to learning and I've seen just by dealing with all these issues in a very small way, how far we have to go. And that takes money and focus. And so I plan on learning a lot more and putting my money where I'm hearing people's mouths are, I guess is what I want to say.
I consider myself probably one of the least biased persons as far as race goes as I know. And I took, I took, of all places, on Ben and Jerry's Ice Cream one site, there is a "Are you racially biased?" test. Takes about 15 or 20 minutes to take. I took it and I didn't like the results of that test because it told me I was, I had some bias. I think that we need to, I think we need to really educate every employee in Lynn County as far as training and learning about racial bias, how to deal with it, how to get rid of it, how to act. I think that there are a lot of people that have thoughts on how that kind of training or that kind of education should be doled out to an organization like Lynn County. And I think some of them are good and some of them are not very good. So we've got to do some due diligence and find out what the right, what the right way to educate our employees is as far as racial bias goes. I think it ought to be mandatory and I think we ought to make sure that if folks don't find the time or can't find, find the effort to go, that we follow up and make sure that we all, we all get trained and we all, we all profit personal wise from the training and all take advantage of it.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, this is on gun reform and gun rights. What are your views on gun violence prevention and gun reform, especially in rural communities? And what can the board do to mitigate youth violence?
That's a tough question. I've had to go first on all the tough questions. I think we've got to try, we've got to make sure that the people that find themselves eligible, that have guns in their hands are capable and, capable and legally allowed to have that kind of firepower in their hands. I don't, I don't know how to keep guns out of people's hands that shouldn't have guns because they somehow find a way to get them. And we've got to, I think we've got to increase our vigilance and try and make sure that folks that shouldn't have guns don't have guns. I don't know that, I don't know that banning any kind of firepower, any kind of weapon is an answer because I think that the folks that really shouldn't end up having guns find a way to get them anyway. So we've got to make sure that our, got to make sure that our laws are clear enough and enforceable enough just to make sure that we try. Thirty seconds. It's a hard, it's a hard, it's a hard question to answer and I don't have all the answers. Maybe we have some answers.
I don't have maybe the answers people want to hear. First, I don't think the role of the county and government has anything to do with gun control or any regulation of guns. So I would start there. But now, back to the issue that we had talked about with the Set Task Force and gun violence in particular neighborhoods, I think the county has a lot to do with that. And education and understanding the problem of gun violence in communities is important and the county can play a role there. But as far as like some ordinance on regulating guns or anything like that, I certainly wouldn't be supportive of that. be supportive of that. I believe in responsible gun ownership, and that's at the very least a state issue and a federal issue. And so I don't support any of that. In fact, I'm kind of opposite a little bit in that we have a gun range at Mattel Bridge, and anybody that, you know, we've invested a lot of money in improving that. So if you want to learn how to shoot guns, we have those opportunities in Lake County. But I just don't think that there's any, anything that, as a board of supervisors, if I'm understanding the question, that we can do on gun control. Now, like I said, as it relates to like the SET Task Force and issues in a community where gun violence is an issue, we have a lot that we can do as far as education and dealing with the problem of that in particular communities.
Thank you. This one is about, actually two questions about community involvement. As a supervisor, you must care about the community you live in. What do you do outside your working hours to give back to or participate in this community? And it's basically what community service have you done to give back to the community?
Well, like I said in the intro, I have a 15-year-old daughter and a 12-year-old son, and that takes a lot of my time. They're in the Catholic school system here in Cedar Rapids, and they're heavily involved in sports and other activities. So that is where the bulk of my free time outside of work goes. But I've also served on quite a few boards, been active in the past with the Cedar Valley Humane Society, a lot of conservation, outdoor efforts in improving our parks, have served on the Cedar Rapids Economic Solid Waste Agency, the Cedar Rapids Metropolitan Planning Organization. And a lot of these things are things that we choose to interface with county government that aren't directly part of our duties as county supervisor. And so we do a lot there. And then with St. Pius Catholic Church, been part of the Boy Scouts and other groups like that during my time as county supervisor.
Part of the, a little bit of what I do in my job is, can be considered community service, but I've really had some good times as a member of the Board of Habitat for Humanity, not on the Board of Habitat for Humanity, but the Board, and on the Board for Housing Fund for Lake County, trying to roll out some housing, housing money to those folks that really need a hand up in Lake County. My wife, Phyllis, and I are active in our church, St. Elizabeth's in Iowatha, and I volunteer weekly at Hostess House. And I'd be there tonight if I weren't here. Those are a couple of the things that I do in my spare time that I think give me, give me a feeling of community service.
Thank you. Speaking of housing, this question is about, all of our homeless shelters are full. Where will homeless families go? And it's to you.
Well, we're going to have to make her a forum. This is not, this is not a very good atmosphere to have folks that are homeless when it's 15 below zero outside or worse. We have, I believe, they are full. We have an overflow shelter that I believe we can fill up, but it does relieve some of the pressure on the full homeless shelters. I think that there's been some talk from the city of Cedar Rapids, and I think some of, a couple of supervisors have also had that kind of talk of jointly trying to figure out where we might, where we might try to come up with some innovative ways to start housing homeless people, even on a temporary basis, little houses that can even be portable at times, but just extra capacity that we need to have that we have, we either can, either it's portable or we have ample room for those kinds of facilities.
I know we have a lack of affordable housing in our community. It seems like every time we have a proposal too, then we don't do anything because of the NIMBY problem, not in my backyard. So every time we've had local politicians talk about how they're in favor of affordable housing, then somebody proposes something, and then we don't do anything because we don't have the backbone enough to stand up and follow through on the affordable housing issues. With regard to homelessness, I remember a friend of mine, Steve, or Dave Sword with OPN, had come across somebody that had no place to go. It was in the wintertime, in Kentucky Fried Chicken, and he called me, and I didn't have any answers. And that's when I, that's when the Board of Supervisors committed some money, pardon, committed some money for the overflow shelter during winter months. But it's clearly a problem. It's not one that any one entity, either city of Cedar Rapids or the Lake County Board of Supervisors can solve all by itself. We need to continue to work to make sure that there are opportunities for affordable housing and that it's safe and that people want to invest in it so that all parts of our community can live, work, play in this community.
And that brings us to closing statements. There were about three questions that weren't answered, one on mental health, one on historic preservation, and one on online information access. I think that these two candidates will be available for a few minutes after the forum is completed. So if you really would like to have your question answered, I apologize for not getting to it, but I'm sure that they would be standing around happy to answer your question at the end. We will begin closing statements with Mr. Olson.
Well, again, I appreciate the League of Women Voters for hosting this. I was a little surprised we didn't have any questions on the flood control tonight. I think that's probably the biggest issue that's going to face the next Board of Supervisors and what role the county should play in flood control in Cedar Rapids. I support, I will say that any monies that are used for flood control, I think, need to be put on the ballot for the voters to decide because it's so outside of normally what county government would be expected to do. And so in that regard, I think that the voters are going to have to tell us, you know, if we're going to put a significant amount of money in there that we need to do that. And it can be done, and it may have to be done with county participation, but we're going to have to lead something similar to that we did with the Conservation Fund and make the case to the voters that county should participate in a meaningful way. And then we have to get together and actually cooperate, have a meaningful relationship in that regard. You know, I think that District 3 needs a strong, independent voice that can play as much defense as it plays offense. And what I mean by that is that I hear from voters all over the district is that they want the county government to stick to county government issues. And at the same time, Cedar Rapids and the metro area is a huge economic engine that needs to be supported by county government. And so how do you balance those two? And then I'll be focused on quality of life issues that all citizens can enjoy from, that you've seen that I've worked on in the past. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. I just wanted to, since my wife is here, give a shout out that I've been married to my wife Phyllis for 38 years and have four daughters and four grandchildren. I missed that on my intro. I want to say that I really love working as a county supervisor. I like the direct connection and the one-on-one with the voters. I think it's one of the few jobs that we have that we can talk to constituents on a one-on-one basis for any length of time we want to. And not just perhaps like if you work in the State House, somebody will come and visit you and you give them 10 or 15 minutes and that's it. But we can, we have the opportunity to have lasting relationships with the people that need help and the people that vote for us. I think we need to, going forward, concentrate on, the corporal works of mercy. We need to shelter the homeless. We need to feed the hungry, and we need to, we need to treat those people that need the help. Most importantly, I will support those initiatives to provide care for Lake County citizens who require care, shelter, and food. Because the people in Lake County expect those who need help to get help. I know they do, and that's our job. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank candidates Brent Olson and John Harris.